Well, welcome you all. Welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall at 7:30 and I'm going to call the meeting of Middleton Common Council for number 20th, 2018 to order. And the first item is the roll call.
Coon?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Teal?
Here.
West?
Present.
Bolson?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
All present.
Okay, so the next item is the comments from the city's president. It's limited to three minutes.
Which honoring police and paramedics first?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, so we're going to switch this and we're going to the presentation honoring Middleton's police and paramedic, paramedic heroes involved in the active shooting incident on September 19, 2018. And Chief Volk is going to take it.
Thanks Mayor and thanks council members. I'm going to say a few words and then Chief Wunsch is going to say a few words also representing Middleton EMS. We really thank you for inviting us here today to recognize the role of first responders on September 19th. And there were plenty of heroes that day, but first and foremost, the employees of Paradigm who survived and helped their fellow colleagues get out of that building safely are the real heroes. And everyone in that business survived and they are to be commended for that. We are of course very proud of the law enforcement response and that came from federal, state, county, and municipal agencies and they provided valuable assistance. I'm very, very proud of the Middleton first responders, the police, EMS, and fire service for their response that day. I'm really, really proud that we are competent tactically and we handled the situation in a manner that I think is, a lot of people were very impressed with. I know that our quick decisive action helped save lives and I'm very proud of the men and women of the Middleton Police Department who responded that way. But I'm more proud of their involvement in this community where a community oriented police department and the men and women of the Middleton Police Department really represent our community well. They're here with their families and that's what our legacy is, is that we are very involved with our community. I want to acknowledge the people that are here today, but before I do that, I would also like to point out that David Kazdorff, would you raise your hand David? David Kazdorff has worked for the Middleton Police Department for 27 and a half years. Tomorrow is his last day. He is retiring. He's been a faithful servant for our community and we are having a little get together for him tomorrow at the police department from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, cake and coffee, perhaps something a little stronger after that, but what will be at the police department between 2:00 and 4:00 is some cake and coffee and we would love for any and all of you to come and recognize Dave's contribution to our department and to our city. I would like to acknowledge everyone that's here. I was at an event with Sheriff Mahoney and he had a bunch of his folks there and I had a bunch of Middleton officers there and I named off all of them flawlessly I might add. And Sheriff Mahoney said, "Why don't you deputies introduce yourselves?" Which I thought was a veteran move, but I'm going to try and get this right just on my own. Officer Rich O'Connor. Wave or something. Captain Troy Helenbrand. Sergeant Jessica Kwame. Sergeant Scott Moan. Officer Julie Carbin. Officer David Kazdorff. Officer Slovodon Rosic. Officer Tyler Lather. Officer Steve Ziegler. Sergeant Darren Zimmerman. Communication Supervisor Wendy McKnight. And Captain Steve Britt. Usually I call Tyler Jeremy, so that's good that I got that. I think that's all of our folks, right? Okay. So anyhow, thanks again for this recognition. That means a lot to us. This was a very traumatic experience for I think our community, certainly the people of Paradigm, certainly for the officers in our department. And I can't tell you how much it means to have some recognition like this or when somebody just simply says, "How you doing?", that means a lot to us. So thank you very much for this recognition tonight. And then I'll, there they go. But I'll turn it over to Chief Wunsch who also wants to recognize the paramedics.
Thank you Chuck. I'm losing my paramedics as we stand here calls, but thanks again for this opportunity to come before you. I don't oftentimes get a chance to come and probably discuss incidents like this, but this certainly was a very high-profile incident. But I wanted to take some time to kind of walk you through some of the events out there and share with you some of our measures of success that happened as a result of that. Ironically, just we got to start at the day as it started off that morning. At 8:30 in the morning, the shift had just begun. We actually had a training session going on at our building. Our, one of our assistant medical directors was in-house conducting that training and that was going from 8:30 to 10:30. Our first call of the day came in a short while after that. One of our ambulances took a different patient from a call here in Middleton, transported them to UW Hospital. On duty that day was paramedics Kevin Gruber, Mark Lloyd, Julie Boglich, and Garrett Latch. And near the end of the training session, which about 10:27 is when the call came in, of course, we all know what the nature of the call was, but it was certainly raised the specter of everyone who heard the call because it immediately told us, not only was it an active shooter, but this is not a drill. We have, you know, certainly practiced these things in the past and as soon as that came across, it really caught everyone's attention. So Dr. Mike Mansera, who's actually here with us tonight, was the medical director who was doing our training. He decided to jump on board, one of our ambulances that left from the station. And our other ambulance that had the earlier call was actually returning from their call. So within five minutes, both of our ambulances were on scene and of course, you know, ready to go to work. Of course, you know, immediately we have to in a high-profile incident like that begin to organize ourselves and set up using the incident command structure, some of the typical things we do in the EMS world to set up our operations. So while that was underway, of course, there's a lot going on. We're working, you know, getting intelligence from the police department exactly what's going on. In short order, we're notified of one, the first, very seriously injured patient that was in the company of one of the Middleton police officers. So that first crew with Dr. Mansera immediately got to that patient and of course, this was one of the most seriously injured patients and you may or may not have heard, suffered 10 separate gunshot wounds. That in and of itself is just, you know, phenomenal, but the patient was still conscious and talking. So they went to immediately to work, performing their life-saving actions and within, you know, a few minutes, were able to get on their way over to UW Hospital. And certainly, you know, this is something I need you to understand about how things have changed in our arena. Years ago, when it came to incidents like this, the word was, "An EMS professional would never go into a scene until it was called the scene is safe." In other words, police would have to clear the whole scene, minutes, hours sometimes would go by before it. Well, we've been forced to change the way we do business. Now, we work in conjunction with law enforcement and under their protection, we will now operate what's called the warm zone concept, which means we will actually enter into a less-than-ideal and secure environment in order to save lives. Because we found out that when people like this, you know, victims are simply left to lie, waiting for help, waiting for secure stuff, they will simply bleed to death. So we need to get in there quickly and that is exactly what happened on this day. So again, with these penetrant traumatic injuries, we just simply can't wait for that scene to be clear. So once we got our direction from law enforcement and escorted, you know, with a armed officer into that patient, they were quickly on their way and of course, Dr. Mansera now moved on with some more intelligence to the actual victim inside the actual, you know, shooter and began to work on him. But the response that we generated, and this is something a credit to our entire Dane County Integrated EMS System, in short order, we had a total of 12 ambulances on scene, all waiting, you know, to be put into play. Certainly our two ambulances, one dealt with that first patient, our second one was dealing with the incident command portion of the EMS operations. But as more and more victims, you know, became, you know, discovered, they certainly got assigned to other, you know, ambulances that were there. And the one thing that's really important for you to know is in trauma care, there's something we call the golden hour concept. That means from the onset of an injury until someone needs to be in the, what we call, bright lights and cold steel of an operating room, you've got one hour to do that. In this particular case, that first patient, from the point that the 911 call was received to the point he arrived at UW Hospital was 25 minutes. We crushed that.
Nice.
So all the patients from this incident arrived at the hospital within an hour. So that in itself is a testament to our success. So we're pretty proud about that and certainly proud of all the, you know, professionals that, from our agency as well as all the others that combined together to make that happen. Again, of those 12 ambulances, not only did we have the two from Middleton, but we had five from the city of Madison, one from the town of Madison, two from Fitzroona, one from Minota, and one from Cross Plains. Certainly as the, you know, incident unfolded, there was a lot of other, you know, chaotic information at one point in time. We were told that there was five patients at another location, which in the long run found out to be those patients didn't exist. Two other patients with some medical problems, which were assessed and did not get transported. And then one patient who actually early on went into their own privately-owned vehicle and made their way to the hospital with minor injuries. So that's typically how these things go, but you know, we began to really pick apart this entire incident, see what we can learn from it, basically we can improve and we're still very, very proud of how things went that day. Another thing that you need to know about, and this is something that's been developed over the last three years, yeah, three years here in Dane County. It's a collaborative effort between all the hospitals, EMS providers and that. It's something called the base hospital concept. And this is the first time that this was used in Middleton. But what happens is on a large-scale incident, early on, we can activate a system where all the hospitals in the region, 10 of them, simultaneously get notified of a large-scale incident like this. They immediately begin to assess their capabilities for accepting patients of varying different levels. That gets communicated to the field EMS personnel so that they can quickly sort their patients and assign them and not overload any one hospital. So this was another real-life example of that and it went very, very well. So, but that's just another testament of something we've been, you know, working on in anticipation of this and here the real-life experience, it came off very, very well. So the other thing is, you know, sometimes behind the scenes, of course, we have a large-scale incident like this, but daily life goes on in our community. Two of our off-duty paramedics who became aware of what was going on, came in off-duty to help staff up our third ambulance. It's a reserve ambulance that normally isn't staffed on a daily basis. While on this particular morning, that ambulance was over at our city garage getting routine maintenance done, oil change and getting titers changed. Of course, came in, no ambulance. So they were told to go up to the city garage and credit to our city staff, unit is up on the hoist, they immediately, you know, finished their oil change down it, tightened the lug nuts, and within 15 minutes, that vehicle is back on the road out there to serve our community. So credit to some of our other city departments as well, recognizing the problem and working together to support us and everything else. So kudos to Brian and Daryl over there. But I want to leave you with, again, as Chuck had indicated before, incidents like this will leave a very lasting impression on all of our personnel who were there that day. And it's, you know, become another kind of a side effect of these types of things and what they do, you know, long-term to people who work in these types of circumstances. So we've been certainly monitoring and watching for the signs and indicators of potential critical incident stress and staying ready to support our personnel out there should they need referrals to, you know, appropriate mental health professionals and that. But the last thing I'll leave you with is the fact that, you know, your decisions over the years to invest in public safety, this is a perfect example of how your investment pays off. Because we had sufficient personnel, the right training, the right equipment, you know, rapid response time, I can tell you without a doubt, lives were saved in this case. So, you know, I'd like to give the credit to all of you for being supportive of our organization and just to know that, you know, in the future, we are going to continue to, you know, refine all of our procedures, help equip our personnel, train them, and continually train so that should something like this happen again, we will be ready. So the last thing I'll do then, again, also do the introductions of the paramedics who are here with us tonight. Kevin Gruber, right in the center, he was there, one of the crew members that day. And then right to the back, Kim Jack. And her partner, Adam Armenta. And then one of our assistant medical directors, Dr. Mike Mansera. I'll just let Mike say a few words as well, so.
I promise I'll be very brief. Thank you so much for the invitations. It's truly an honor to be here and I will, again, Chief covered things very well. I will extend a huge thank you not only to the EMS and law enforcement, but all of public safety because there were a lot of things that happened right on that day under very unfortunate circumstances and everyone came together and relied on the training that they had and the resources that they had and 100% made a huge impact on this community in a very positive way and definitely saved lives. So I'm honored to work with them, proud to work with them every day and thank you guys and thank you for your time.
The two other guys that I said to leave in the call, Ryan Fitterman and Jennifer Selig, are here tonight.
Well, as a mayor of Middleton, I would say we are all proud of you, what you did. The response time of three minutes to get there and controlling the whole thing within eight minutes, that's actually phenomenal. We are all proud of you. Anybody else want to say anything? Yeah, Mike, you want to say something? Susan, go ahead.
I would like to ask if we could take a brief five or 10 minutes so that we could individually interact and thank all of our first responders. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah. So does anybody else want to speak, say anything before we do that?
I'd like to just make a few comments too. On behalf of the city staff, the rest of the city, thank you for your service. Your public safety ethic is strong and it makes us all stronger. And we as the city staff here in this building, we are under lockdown at that time. I know the school district was under lockdown, much of the business community was too, and thankfully, we had you on our side and you did an outstanding job, so really appreciate it.
Okay, so we have a five-minute break.
We haven't come up here and get a picture also?
Yeah, you guys want to come up here?
We can stand up there. You guys want to?
Everybody turn this way please. Mayor, city councilor. All get to the back. All get to the back. All right, tight. Come together tight.
Nice to meet you.
Sir, that's my dad.
Yeah, me too.
I'm fine, sir.
Yeah, if I ever pull that on you, it's just because I move fast. Yeah, right?
So he's got one in the heart?
Yes, he does. You didn't know that? So do we, do we?
Well, they'll be coming at some point.
Yeah, but they're thinking everything.
So we're going to start the next part of the city council meeting.
Oh, very modestly, the presentation, don't be skipped over.
Okay, so the next item, the agenda is the comments from the city's president. And it's limited to three minutes per speaker and you can identify yourself and you have three minutes. Anybody who wants to speak? Okay, well, I'm going to close that part of the meeting and we are going to move to the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval. Second.
I don't need to ask any questions.
I already had my comments corrected, so thank you.
Okay. So the motion is approved, the consent agenda, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes unanimously. Now we are on to the agreements. Item number one, agreement for tax incremental finance district number three and number five redevelopment services for 2019 from Wendell Wall and Associates.
The rule was recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pause so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous. Item number one, this is the concept approval for the Nest Downtown Middleton Plaza, 7550 Hubbard Avenue.
Hello. Let me get my slideshow going here. So we are really excited to be here tonight for the concept review of the Nest, the plaza design that has now been unanimously recommended by the Downtown Plaza Advisory Team as well as the Plan Commission. I wanted to first introduce our Downtown Plaza Advisory Team to you because most of the members are here in the room tonight. First, we have Rochelle Ritzen-Toller, who is our public input facilitator. Rochelle has done an outstanding job on behalf of the city, putting in a lot of time on this project pro bono. And you'll recall that Rochelle was also an early supporter of the plaza and lives downtown and she has done a phenomenal job. We have Van Nutt, who represents the Middleton Chamber. Dr. Colin Connors with the Downtown Middleton Business Association. Kathy Olson, representing the common council and the District One representative. Zoe Schuler, representing the Tourism Commission. Zoe also owns a shop in downtown and is also on the DMBA. We have Joan Zieger, who's representing the Historic Middleton Station Neighborhood Association. Joan is replacing Robert Stapichovich, who was initially appointed but has since moved out of the district. And we have David Reed from our Plan Commission, who I don't think could make it tonight. Our design team, we have two landscape architects from Psyche Design working on the project. We have Ken Psyche and Julia Schilling. Peter Fortledge is handling engineering for the project. Gail Simpson and Eris Giorgiades are the public artists involved with the project from Actual Size Artworks. Taylor Gothorp and Kelsey Richmond are engineers working on the project from IMAG. And Melissa Rodriguez is the architect from Knothian Bruce who's working on the project. Melissa also lives in downtown Middleton. The timeline for this project, we've, we've pretty much stuck to it to a T, at least to this point. In January, the council approved the RFP for a design firm. In February, our Plaza Advisory Team reviewed six proposals, narrowed it to three finalists. In March, the team interviewed the three finalists and recommended Psyche Design and of course, the council took action on that as well. In April and May, we had a flurry of activity. We held four public input meetings, we had the two billboards at the site, and we also had a social media campaign that included the city's first-ever hashtag. In June, we had the Psyche Design meeting with the Downtown Plaza core team. In August, Psyche Design met and presented concepts to the city. And in September, we had a meeting where we reviewed the concepts and the Downtown Plaza Advisory Team narrowed it down to three. What has been really exciting throughout this whole process is that every public meeting that we've had, we've had just people from the neighborhood who are interested, people from the business community who have shown up and provided support and comments for the project. So there aren't that many city meetings that I'm involved with where we get that much interest from the public, so it's exciting to see that. In October, we held the public input session at the, at the library where we unveiled the three concepts and we had evaluation cards for people to let us know what they thought about the concepts. And now we are to November, where we are hoping you will select a concept and recommend moving forward with a concept, which will then allow our design firm to finalize plans in December and January, which will allow us to hit the sweet spot for bidding by February or early March. We're hoping that construction can take place in the summer of 2019. So the goal tonight is concept approval of the Nest. The Downtown Plaza Advisory Team had seven conditions of approval and we would hope that any recommendation that you make tonight carries forward those seven conditions of approval. The Plan Commission added an additional condition, which is that drainage needs to be met at the site without a need for pumping. So we incorporated that into number two, which is shown here on the screen. Many of these have now been met in the current concept that you're going to see. I wanted to highlight something else that's happening in the downtown and I think most of you are aware of this, but one of the things that we said when we came and brought the plaza concept forward to the city council is that a public plaza in our downtown is going to attract more people, more activity, it's going to strengthen our community and the businesses that serve us and the city's economy as a whole. And we are already seeing that happen. There is a monthly activity now that's being organized by the Downtown Retailers Association called Good Neighbor Nights. On the third Thursday of every month, they had the first event last week. I saw Joanna getting smores in the public plaza. The goal is that- The goal is that the businesses will stay open later, and also that there will be some kind of central activity in the green space. I wanted to address costs a bit. We talked about this a little bit at Finance Committee. Our current construction estimate is about 1.5 million. And that includes a 20% general contractor fee and a 20% contingency. At this point in the design, we don't have firm costs, but we want to make sure that we're being conservative with the costs that we're presenting to the council. We are looking at a few options for capital costs. One, of course, is TIFF District III, which is the funding source that was used to acquire the four parcels. Mike Davis and I are meeting with the Madison Community Foundation early next month. The purpose of that meeting is to discuss fundraising and how we can establish a successful fundraising campaign to help secure additional private donations for the project. In terms of the ongoing costs, we're working with Psyche Design to minimize maintenance of the lands as much as possible. I will point out, every concept included a public restroom, and this was extremely important to the Downtown Plaza Team in order to respond to the public input that we received. So, we heard from many people in the public meetings that they wanted to have a public restroom, not necessarily to support the larger events, because a really large event is probably still going to require bringing in some portable potties, but really for more of the day-to-day activity. We don't want to have to rely on a nearby bar that's open when we're having a family movie night. You know, if somebody has kids and they need to take their kids to a restroom. So that was really critical and an early recommendation that came out of the Downtown Plaza Team. We are discussing some options for the Community Development Authority. The CDA in Middleton has a part-time LTE position that helps to maintain the areas around the downtown, pulling weeds in the terraces, helping to maintain their planter baskets and those sorts of things. And we've had an initial meeting with Public Lands, the Library, and Tourism to talk about the possibility of combining line items between those four separate entities, where rather than having some of the departments contracting out landscaping services, could we combine, get a lower cost, and potentially hire somebody that would have more of a horticultural background that could help us more with the public plaza? So that's preliminary at this point, we're planning on bringing something forward. We think that it could make sense both financially and get better service for the city as well. The other option that's been discussed is the possibility of TIFF District III providing some seed funding to the CDA, which would then allow the CDA to continue to have funding available for this expanded LTE if that LTE was responsible for maintenance at the plaza. So those are all things that are still in discussions, but I just wanted to bring them up to you. We'll bring you details at a later date. I would now like for Rochelle Ritzen-Toller to come up and present the public input that we got.
Thank you, council, for having me again. I wanted to say, I was an early supporter of the public plaza, but I didn't necessarily know what should go there. Part of my role as a facilitator and a design researcher is to gather input from lots of different people, different perspectives, and then help in the decision-making process. So, it's been really interesting, as this has gone along, to hear what people had to say about this space and change some of the assumptions that I thought what people would think should go there. So, this is a number of the things that Abby already mentioned that we did in our research process. I also wanted to note that Abby did a really great survey. I think there was over 600 impressions for a social media campaign on an online survey for selecting one of the concepts. And the concepts we're going to show you today is the one that the public did select and had the highest score. So, the three questions that we asked the public, and I know a lot of you have already heard this, this is almost like eating your vegetables now. I'm just like translating what all the public said a number of times, just to make sure that everyone's heard. But the first question was, what could make the space uniquely Middleton? The second was around events, like what sort of events could you imagine in the future? What sort of events do we already have that the space should support? We also talked a lot about daily lifestyle, just kind of walking through the space or shopping downtown. What could you see in this plaza? And then, what does it mean to be a good neighbor was a really interesting question, just to kind of get people thinking outside and creatively about what the space could do. So we also had the billboards that many of you saw downtown, that we won't look too closely at in the social media campaign. So, from this came five design principles. I'll say, in the survey that we sent out online, people could say whether or not this concept that we presented aligned with the five design principles. In the concept we're going to show today, 99% of the people thought that the concept, the Nest, aligned with these design principles, aligned with what they had already said. So, the first design principle is to be a respite for downtown life, incorporating nature, natural materials. The second was encouraging gathering for all ages in a flexible environment. The third was to serve as a place to strengthen community, really around music, performance art, food, visual arts, things like that, and culture. The fourth was being a source of light and warmth in the winter months. And the fifth is creating a central destination to explore downtown. And I'm going to spend just a few brief minutes talking about how we translated some of these concepts into the design. So, the concept that you're going to see tonight includes green space. We weren't sure early on if this was going to be more of a traditional paved plaza space or green. Due to the public input, it really felt like it needed to be predominantly green space. When we were thinking about a respite, we're thinking about a sense of separation from the busy street. If we're thinking about children running around the space, how do they know when to stop? When to stop running and not run right into Elmwood, right? Also thinking about shade elements, and not really including any loud or busy features, like amusement park-like features, people thought. We're including natural materials, sustainability elements, like previous paving, solar, if possible, we're looking into. And water features is one of the other things that might be a possibility in some of the spaces. For the second design principle, we're thinking about a senior-friendly space. So I've done a lot of research into dementia-friendly environments, and actually informed some of the dementia-friendly community environmental principles that the team is working on. So these walking paths that you'll see in the space allow seniors to step off of the main paths of the sidewalks and kind of meander around the park in a different pace. Everything is ADA accessible, and there will be plenty of benches in the space for seniors. We're also considering, and this is outside the scope of this project, obviously, but some of the things that the public had said to consider, the path from the senior center to the plaza, as something with the higher density of benches that we'll have to consider in the future. Kid-friendly, people didn't really talk about a single-purpose place structure. They wanted this to be a space for all ages, and kids will climb on anything. So make this just a space that everyone will enjoy. And then, outdoor gathering. We wanted to include storage space for tables and chairs, so people could have their food taken out from some of the great restaurants surrounding there and eat or drink coffee in the park. And also the public restroom, which Abby had already mentioned. Public art is integrated as part of the design. This isn't something we're plopping down later or just finding a spot for, this is really a piece of this. We're thinking about the option to expand into Hubbard Street for larger events. How can we shut down that Hubbard and Aurora Street connection? Easy setup for events, we don't want people to have to drag everything out. Outdoor movies was a big thing that people talked about, so where could a screen go and the restrooms? The fourth one, talking about the light and warmth in the winter months, focused on integrated lighting. We're thinking about warming elements such as heaters, fireplace, warm benches, anything that we can get people there in the winter. I think something of concern also that we've talked a little bit about is winter maintenance and winter programming, so what sort of festivals and things that we can do in the winter months. The fifth design principle we're thinking about is creating a central destination to begin exploration of our downtown. An iconic sculpture where people can say, meet at the, whatever it might be, where people can sort of point to that thing, would help in downtown wayfinding. There's also talk about creating this historic connection to the Middleton's first livery stable, which was on the site. So how we are going to incorporate that landmark as well. So, translating this into design, these are the scores from the public input survey. So the Nest had the highest average score, and also a mode of five. And I also went through all of the open and comments, and had shared that with the Plaza Advisory Team before we made our selection. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ken to talk about the design solutions.
So this is a moment in time in the evolution of this design. And as Abby and Rochelle have said, we're working on the Nest concept. And this is sort of an updated plan that is beginning, that takes into account the seven comments that came from our advisory team and working on sort of finalizing this. Here, we've added a number of entry points to the plaza, that was one of the comments that was mentioned. The restroom location is in the northeast corner of the site, and it doubles as a stage for performances. We're working on the actual configuration of that building now. We talked about an interactive feature and the integrated public art, and this is a, these are elements that'll be coming forward to first the art committee, and then back through our advisory team, and then ultimately back through the process as we work with Actual Size on what the actual elements will be. This is a brief fly-through of the project as it exists about two weeks ago. Coming in from the corner at Aurora and Hubbard, you can see the shelter bathroom stage building in the corner. This is really a placeholder right now, but something that's being detailed currently. A view from Hubbard, looking into the site, and as Rochelle had mentioned, we're depressing the center of the site slightly, so that we have some security and safety for children using the space. So like I said, this is a moment in time a couple of weeks ago. This is our point of departure for final design and development, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ken, or Abby, or Rochelle?
A few of our Downtown Plaza Advisory Team members would like to come up and say a couple sentences as well.
Absolutely, good idea.
Let's start with Van Nutt from the Chamber.
Van Nutt.
This is potentially a huge piece of downtown, and we've talked about this since the opportunity to put this together was presented. But it isn't just about downtown. For people to take advantage of this, they're going to be coming from other places. And so, it becomes not just a centerpiece for downtown, but also a magnet for people. People coming from other places have to drive through the community. So this becomes a catalyst for traffic into the community from other places. It can be a starting point to tour Middleton. For those of us who work or live downtown, it becomes a place for us to be able to have meetings, to relax, to not sit on a bench on the street. And I think Abby mentioned seniors using the benches. That really could be any of us. But there's tremendous economic value here, but not just to downtown, but to the entire community. And I hope you consider that, thank you.
Next up is Dr. Colin Connors from the Downtown Business Association.
So, just have been really excited about the project from kind of when it was announced, what we were doing with that space. And as a business owner around the area, have been really excited about the plans and the design that's come up from it. Just the way that it integrates, you know, the surrounding area accessibility to not just, you know, the living spaces around the park itself, but also the businesses, kind of the sightlines throughout the plaza. And kind of accessibility, again, to that, where, you know, people, when they're coming, whether it's eating at the restaurants, or shopping at the stores, or stopping at the businesses kind of throughout. I think what's been really big is that it can be kind of, you can see the use for day-to-day life as well as larger events, smaller events. You know, some of the things you think of in the downtown Middleton area, whether it's the Shop and Blues or the Farmer's Market or some of those things, there's a lot of things that can be done with the space. And just, it's been planned really well to benefit everything around it. And so, really excited about the surrounding and what it can be done.
Thank you.
And next up is Joan Zieger from the Historic Middleton Station Neighborhood.
Thank you, I'd like to ask you to vote for this project, the Nest, because downtown residents would be so happy to have their mental and physical health improved. And when I looked this up, I couldn't believe that there are dozens and dozens of studies that cite the fact that having a green space with interesting things in it improves mental health. How can it be that simple? Because, am I the only one who needs improving mental health? So, it will decrease loneliness. Loneliness is no longer a problem of just the elderly, alas, it just isn't. We live in an era of screens of all kinds, of too many perhaps, but we're in here, that we need to deal with it. So it isn't a matter of just having a green, simple space, a green desert, as some people would say. You've got to create something on it that people are willing to come to and get out of their place and walk around and come to over and over. And when residents do that, they will create the bodies that will attract other people, and it will be like a sale. Whenever you go to a sale, there's nothing until one person goes to the thing. Then you'll have two, then you'll have several. So I hope you do, and vote for the Nest, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
And last but not least is Zoe Schuler from the Tourism Commission. And of course, Kathy can feel free to make remarks.
Hi, everybody. So in terms of tourism, I think that the Nest supports tourism because it provides a place where larger groups can gather. And this just has really interesting timing, because we just had a Tourism Commission meeting tonight. And we were presented with survey results from Pilch and Barnett for our strategic planning. And some of the findings that we found were that 63% of visitors rated that they've been downtown and enjoyed their experience the most, so we can make it even better for future visitors. And the other thing that the majority of people in this survey told us was that when they are asked to describe Middleton and what they remember, they mention shopping and dining. And the Nest can provide a way to link all of the shopping and dining places in the downtown area and just make that experience all the better for all of the tourists. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Kathy, you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say as part of the team that it's been a wonderful process. There's so much public input and interest in this project. And the downtown, you can see now, it's just getting more vibrant than ever with the new businesses coming in, and this is just going to be such a wonderful enhancement to the downtown.
I want to say thank you to the whole team for doing a phenomenal job with this one. Okay, so we need, anything else? Anybody else want to, Abby want to present or say? Okay, so we need a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the concept of the Nest for the Downtown Plaza.
Second.
Okay, any question or comments now? Okay, if there are no question or comments, all those in favor of approving the concept for the Downtown Middleton Plaza, the Nest, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pause, so the motion passes unanimously, great job, so thank you.
Mayor, I noticed that John Wagenki is back here, and sometimes he's sat for really long times during this meeting. Could we move up the planning and zoning items, numbers one and two?
Okay, absolutely. Okay, let's go to planning and zoning. And let's go to item number one, that is the reapproval of the Cardinal Crest Plan Development District Best Implementation Plan.
Full approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'll just bring it up. This has been on the agenda every year in my eight-year tenure. I need to understand why we continue to do this.
I think because the property owner is not ready yet to move ahead, and this first one, Cardinal Crest, is actually... first one, Cardinal Crest, is actually in the town of Westport. There continues to be support for it and in order to keep it current, it just needs reapproval every year. I think at some point he will propose it. It's four condominiums. Next one on Villages is one empty lot, vacant lot within an already developed area in the city. And again, when the time is right, we know that it's going to match the other condos that are there.
At what point in time does approval become stale then?
I think that's a question that the, you know, council can decide. The Plan Commission, I think, continues to feel that both uses are still appropriate and so therefore why not reapprove them and keep them in place versus having, you know, having the property owner start over again if they're still appropriate.
And so what are the design or ordinances that have been put in place, right, that that these, this individual in particular, I guess it's extraterritorial zoning, so it really doesn't matter too much. But we're assuming that what was put in place when the original was first, when this was originally approved, is still, hasn't been changed and that there are no new ordinances that a new developer would have to become compliant with. Has anybody looked at that?
Well, when he, when the property owner comes forward with a specific implementation plan, they will have to meet all the applicable ordinances such as stormwater and that type of thing. So they're not, they're not getting a pass.
You're asking for approval for an SIP.
Well, if they, if they come in, bring their plans in though, they've still got to meet all of the requirements. I mean, they're not, stormwater hasn't been approved yet, so they'll have to, they'll have to meet that. So it's an SIP for the concept of having four condominium units on the acreage.
So what would it be, what would it take if someone was to start from scratch? I mean, versus this one here? So that takes a lot of effort and time then?
Well, for, for the part that's in the town, it would be the Middleton-Westport Joint Zoning Committee holding a public hearing. It'd be the council holding a public hearing because it is in the extraterritorial zoning. Could be two public hearings, a new plan.
When was this originally approved? Since, I mean, I'm assuming that maybe it has been going on for decades.
Sure. Well, it hasn't been decades. The first, well, the second one, the Villages, that was five years ago it was first approved. And again, that's a vacant lot within the already approved and already built city condo project. And then Cardinal Crest, I think, probably is 12 years old maybe, approximately. So the City of Middleton, excuse me, and the Town of Westport have been jointly planning for 21 years. Next year it'll be 22 years, I think. Anyway, so, you know, I'm saying we're almost to 22. And this one continues to meet the requirements of the Middleton-Westport Joint Zoning Committee. One of the things they wanted to do was make sure that it was appropriate for existing neighborhoods. This is very appropriate next to the Briggs Road neighborhood, for instance. It's south of the Bishop's Bay Golf Course, which of course is in the Town of Westport, and it's north of the Villages. So it's a little less dense than what we have in the city.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the reapproval of the Cardinal Crest Plan Development SIP, say aye. Anyone oppose?
Motion there.
Oh, I thought we did.
Was it a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Okay, now all those in favor of this motion, say aye. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Okay, six, two. Next item is.
Six, two. Mark.
Reapproval of the Villages of Bishop Bay, Single Family Lot, Plan Development District, Sumner Properties LLC Signature Drive. Need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Same questions apply.
Okay.
You answered most of them.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of this reapproval of the Village of Bishop Bay, Single Family Lot, Plan Development District, say aye. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Six, two. Okay, now we go back to our regular agenda. Item number two. Relocation of the bike park, trailhead, parking and access drive.
Approval is recommended by Finance, which included referrals to Public Works and Planning and also included some language to make the developer responsible for any improvements onto Schwartz Road and also for Highway 14 if necessary.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Any, you want to talk about it?
Here to answer any questions on this or the next two agenda items, I would also point out that the property owner, Dan Erdman, and as well as Yuri Gussev with the Central Cross Country Ski Association are both here in attendance if there are any questions.
Okay, questions now? Questions for Matt? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just, I know Public Works hasn't weighed in on this yet. The, the sharp bend at what is currently the end of Schwartz Road and to this access drive that's being proposed, is there room there for, I would assume, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would assume that you would try to curve the bend a little bit there if there was at all room in that area to kind of bend it so that people aren't doing these harsh 90-degree bends. It's a, I was going to reference an exhibit if somebody wanted to put it up, but is there any chance that there's a little flexibility in the land right at that area to kind of have a nice curve in the road?
What I can answer that is two-part. The first is that's a line on a drawing. There's been no preliminary engineering done. The schedule in front of you has plenty of reviews and approvals that will come through various committees as well as the referral from this, that it's in the motion to refer it to Public Works and Plan Commission as well. The other is, is at least preliminarily why that line was drawn that way. There's some significant slope there that we want to try and avoid as much as possible to keep costs down on the project.
Fair enough.
Okay.
This also is, it's not a public thoroughfare. Public driveway, it's an access driveway.
Sure.
There are different rules that you can apply to this.
And I understand that people aren't going to be driving down this road at 40, 50, 60 miles an hour. I guess I just was listening to what was going on in the Finance Committee and the concerns about making sure that whatever the design is, that Public Works has a chance to weigh in, which I'm sure will happen, and that I would assume that even at two miles an hour, you know, you don't necessarily want super sharp curves. If there's any, if there's any ability to smooth it out a little bit, so much the better.
Thank you, Robert. Any other question or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion to, for the relocation of the bike park, trailhead, parking and access drives, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The motion passes unanimously. We are on to item number three. Approval of memorandum of understanding between Central Cross Country Ski Association, Dan Erdman and City of Middleton.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, if there are no question or comments, all those in favor of the motion of approval of the memorandum of understanding between Central Cross Country Ski Association, Dan Erdman and the City of Middleton, say aye. Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. So the next one is the approval of task order with Strand and Associates for the Pleasant View Bike Park Trailhead Parking and Access Drive.
Move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the task order with Strand and Associates, say aye. Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number five. Authorization to fill the vacancy for the Public Lands Recreation and Forestry Office Manager.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any question or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to authorize filling the vacancy in PRFC, say aye. Anyone oppose? So the motion passes. So the next one is the authorization to fill the vacancy for the part-time finance assistant.
Move approval is recommended by Finance and Personnel.
Second.
Any question or comments? All those in favor of the motion to fill the vacancy for the part-time finance assistant, say aye. Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. We are on to the ordinances. This is the first reading. Final action may be taken on approval of the motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 of Milton General ordinances. An ordinance to men's section 9.05, 10D1A and D of the City of Milton General ordinances relating to the quarterly service charge, the sewer rates.
I'll move we waive the first reading and go to final approval.
Okay.
Second.
Any, Sean, you have any, want to say anything or?
That was it.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I, sure. Theory.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to the recommendations and proposals. Item number one, recommendation on Palmer Clark Street Proposals Received in Response to the City's Request for Proposals.
I'll move approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Perhaps it would be in order to explain what Finance approved.
Yep.
Mike, do you want to capture what the motion was from Finance?
At Finance, we had the motion to recommend that we continue negotiating with both developers. And I had asked for some clarification on a few points and the Finance Committee provided their input. One of which was that in the RFP, we had requested that the price, the purchase price be paid upfront with the development. One of the two proposals recommended that, the other did not. Also, we had in the RFP that we wanted architectural renderings of the project, not full, but at least conceptual. And one of those had that and the other did not. So there were different aspects of the matrix that were met by the, but one of the important ones for the council was that money upfront with cash payment. So I'd asked the Finance Committee, given that, if they would want the staff to continue refining with those developers, both of them, based on that premise. And the Finance Committee answer was yes. Also, the, the question of architectural renderings was they'd like to see a concept of both presented. Right now, we have one. And I think there was a third point, Bill, can you remind me what that was?
Workforce.
Yes, on the, whether it's workforce or market-based housing. And the committee did not have a preference for, that was my understanding at least, that.
Some workforce housing should be included.
Okay, thank you. There was some workforce housing that should be included.
Didn't say how much.
Didn't say how much. Thank you. That's right. There was a slight preference.
So that could be from zero to the entire capacity.
It can be zero, but.
Some means at least something.
So those were the three things that we, I just wanted to get some policy clarification and direction from the Finance Committee and ideally from the full council as well. And that would be inherent in the motion if you go with the recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Okay, it's your chance to weigh in. So anybody else, I mean, the original RFP was that, that the city wanted $2.63 million upfront, so.
So I'm not sure that necessarily going back to negotiation is going to take us anyplace farther than where we are now. I mean, we seem to have dueling banjos here where every time a proposal comes forward, another one comes forward. And generally in an RFP process, they're brought forward and you decide one or the other. And then you negotiate from that point. For my personal preference, one of the things that we talked about when we originally started this process was the, the fact that we wanted the money upfront. We wanted to be paid in full and be done with this. We also looked at the amount of increment. So there's, you know, if we take $2.6 million, we don't get that back, that's got a, you know, that's accounted for someplace. And if it comes from TIF, that means we have less money for other things that we may want to do. So that's something to think about. So I'm just not sure really where we go from, from, I'm not sure I understand where the more negotiation gets us.
And if I could clarify to the best of my ability on that, so T-Wall Enterprises is saying that they would pay upfront for the property, but they want 100% of the increment from the project. Jacob Klein's most recent proposal is option C on this chart that Bill Burns put together for you outlining the financial options. And it looks like Emily didn't get a copy of that.
I think I did. I think I put it in my bag.
Robert can show you.
Thanks. My bad.
On that option C then, his recommendation or request was that the city provide the land for the development and then he would not have need for any of the increment. The increment then would go to the city. Bill's calculation of that on a net present value basis was that it would be a wash with the T-Wall proposal. However, it would not provide the cash upfront. So financially, it would be a wash, but you wouldn't have the money upfront. You would have the increment over time. One of the experiences that we've had as staff is we've seen that those initial projections of increment are, tend to be lower based on today's values. Over time, they, they take on greater value depending upon the, how the economy's going. But that's Bill's evaluation of what we have received to date in that chart that you received prior to the meeting.
But in any case, they both are asking 100% of the TIF, one way or the other. And in one case, one is paying the money upfront at closing and the other one is asking the land to be far free to begin with, so.
That's correct.
Bill, could I ask you to step up? I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about Finance. Unfortunately, I didn't think of these at Finance. What was the, what was the timeframe that you looked at the, your net present value calculations?
It was over the remaining time period of the TIFs. I believe that included through 2036 is the final year.
For TIF V.
For TIF V, correct.
So the issue that I don't think's been addressed here, and I don't know if you've thought of this, the initial funds for the purchase of this property came from TIF III. So doesn't that suggest that the payback period has to be within the life of TIF III, unless we're talking about borrowing money from TIF V to pay back to TIF III? Right? So there's that aspect to it. And then that in and of itself has ramifications for budget proposals for TIF V as well.
Yeah, the TIF III advanced funds to TIF V for the purchase of the property.
Have to pay back by when?
TIF III would close by 2030. Our projections for TIF V, and those are just projections, a lot can change between now and 2030, would be that TIF V would have funds by 2030 to be able to repay that. This analysis. This analysis was just, and I should mention that these are estimates, we have some financial information, but not full pro formas from either project. So this was trying to put together an estimate. And this just simply looked at discounting items at a rate of 4.75%. That was selected because that was the state trust fund loan current rate for that time period. We were trying to look at if the city, whether within one TID or the other, had to borrow funds for a project rather than having the cash, what is the borrowing rate for that? So this is a preliminary analysis, it didn't get into looking at the structure of advances or interest payments between the TID, but just trying to look at the time value of money as a quick snapshot.
I get that, I'm just trying to make everybody aware that this becomes more complex for both TIDs and for planning expenditures for TIF V if we don't get reimbursement of our purchase price at the front of this deal.
Yeah, and, and the advance that was made between TID III and TID V was initially advanced for the one-year time period anticipating that the city would sell the property and have the ability to repay that. If the city accepts a proposal that doesn't have the payment upfront, the terms of that advance would need to be defined and it does get more complicated.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The workforce housing component that they're asking to be part of the proposal now? That wasn't part of the original proposal. I mean, how can you change it like in the middle of this and making it a requirement? And I'm not sure how the math works out on Terrence's proposal, but the workforce housing on his owner-occupied townhouses, I don't know that. Is that, would that suffice on that?
So I, I, I don't know what the original proposal was, I know that the two proposals came to the Workforce Housing Committee. And we were, there was one that was clearly addressing workforce housing and one that was not. I don't think we anticipated that there'd be only a residential proposal when we put out the RFP, so we didn't address that. But I will tell you that TID V has strong recommendations for workforce housing as part of its pro forma of what we're hoping to get out of TIF V. My concern with just going down one route instead of keeping both viable at this point is that if you go down one route and if that developer wants to delay and kind of string things along, and we've had kind of experience with one developer doing that, we have a project right now that's kind of a little off timeline.
Projects.
Or at least one that I, that Public Works has been delaying for a long time for any sewer and, and water. But that, we're also then just amping up the rent cost in Middleton because we're not doing a project here while they're racking up rent somewhere else that's in the same marketplace. And I'm very concerned about that, I think we're going to, at one point, really price everyone out of this community, especially people like police officers, EMTs, teachers, the real solid middle class that really is the, the, the gel that keeps a community together. So we have opportunities at both ends of the scale, but the middle class is really what holds that together. So I'm really concerned that if we go down one path, we eliminate a lot of possibility. And I'd like to see both proposals go forward and see how much we can get. I don't think we've seen the end of either of these proposals yet, you've seen a lot of movement. To me, that means that there's a lot to give that is yet to be put on the table. So I, I think keep our options open at this point.
So Joanna, I was talking to someone, they, they were more interested in affordable single-family homes rather than apartments. And, you know, I think that's.
So that was one person you talked to?
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you five or 10 people I've talked to that would like affordable rents too.
Well.
It doesn't make it an N, that's an N of one, that's not a res, a survey that's.
This is what I talked recently, but it's, I mean, people are more interested in affordable, single-family homes in Middleton if they could find it, this.
This is not a place for single-family homes.
I, I know, I know, but I'm, I'm talking about the bigger picture, so yes.
Joanna, what does workforce housing, they talk about workforce housing rent-wise, but do they, what do they talk about for homeownership? Is that part of the?
Absolutely, that's part of it, and you don't usually see a lot of detached, single-family homes on the market that are affordable. You know, affordability, anything in this, we have many experts in the room who can talk about this more eloquently than I can. But we don't, we don't have that in Middleton any longer, you really don't have. Now, is a townhome or a condominium a substitute for that? Is a townhome the same as a condominium? You know, and what are the costs for that? So I think you, I, I think both proposals now have talked about mixes of this. So let's keep both proposals viable. And let's see which one is a better deal overall for the appearance, for the entrance to the city, for workforce housing, for the payback for the TIF, and then for really the, the cementing of our community. That, that property is such a valuable property for an entrance, for part of that community. You've seen the three developments that are already there, Cardinal Row and then the two Parmenter Centers. Those, that's a beautiful part of our city. And you don't want something that's going to go in there that's just going to be plopping down and not going to be a good anchor for that part of our city. So I, I, at this point, I don't want to eliminate, you know, I, I clearly have a preference in this race, but I'm, I'm not eliminating one or the other, I want to keep both of them going and see what they give us.
Any other, Abby?
I just wanted to make a couple remarks regarding what's considered affordable. So the definition of workforce housing is pretty complicated, but it also is exact if you're using WIDA guidelines. And in terms of owner-occupied housing, if you assume a two-person family or a three-person family and you use a guideline of 80% of area median income, which is typically our definition of workforce housing in Middleton, that will give you an income limit of either $57,000 or $60,000, $65,000 per year. So that's a two-person and a three-person household, what they would earn at 80% of area median income. You can then run calculations based on the affordability requirement, which is that a person shouldn't be paying more than 30% of their income on housing or they're cost burdened. And using those income levels, you could get to an affordable purchase price at 80% of AMI at either $193,000 or $217,000. We don't see many housing units, single-family homes on the market at 193 or 217. Using a more generous calculation, which I don't want to go into the details of the description, but you may be able to get up to a purchase price of about $266,000 and still meet the 80% of area median income requirement. But $350,000 to $400,000 is not considered affordable at 80% of area median income under any scenario. And I don't know what percent of AMI you would have to be at to meet that affordability requirement, but it's significantly more than 80% of area median income.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Any other question or comments?
I agree with Joanna.
Okay, so, do you want to say anything, Mike?
I just wanted to follow up on Kathy's question. And that was, was it explicit in the RFP about workforce housing? And it was, as Joanna said, it was not explicit requested in the RFP, but we did say within the goals of tax increment district number five.
But now they're making it a requirement, they're asking it to be a requirement. Because you just said you wanted it to have a component of workforce housing.
We'd like to see some workforce housing, certainly not the entire thing.
No, but that's, that is making the requirement different than what it was when it went out.
Requiring at least one unit that's different than the RFP.
Yeah.
I would like to see some workforce housing.
I don't, yeah, I just don't know how you can make that a requirement now that it, the RFP was put out.
Wasn't a requirement, but it is inherent in the goals of tax increment district number five.
You know, we can keep working with the developers and then, you know, assess what they bring forward, but I don't know how you could make it a requirement now. If, if somebody doesn't come back with the workforce housing, then you say, oh, we can't, we can't accept this? Just like when we voted on this, we said we, we want the money upfront.
I think there's a lot of things that need to be brought forward for us to make decisions. I see including some workforce housing as a plus. I'm looking at both developers' offers on the initial amount of money for the land. I see those sort of equal. I'm also very concerned about how both developers have worked previously with the city on projects in their track records. I have concerns there. We need more information.
Other question or comments, yes, Emily?
I just wanted to say that I thought both proposals were thoughtful and I'm glad to see that they're both evolving to your needs. And I remember reading one in particular that talked about being interested in serving the, the local businesses and the, the high school and that there's so many like staff and teachers and also families with, students with special needs. And I'm, I'm sure it's really both developers are thinking in that mindset because it's so close. But that really, that really spoke to me because sometimes when we build in our city, we, we attempt workforce housing, but then we also then have this piece of how do we get people to those jobs? Because we really are infilling to wherever they are. But I think this is a very special location and has some great opportunities and I look forward to what's coming. So thank you.
Okay, any other important? So the question is, this is the Finance Committee proposal that, which to me looks like a little bit of a change from the original RFP and, but that's what we're voting on, so. So does every, you want to read it again or everybody knows now what you were voting on?
I, I, I would, I'd, I'd be willing to have somebody read back what the motion is right now.
I had the motion as directing staff to continue working with both developers to fully flesh out both proposals. And then there was the discussion addressing the three points that Mike Davis spoke to. I didn't have that as part of the motion, but just as direction that in working with both developers, that the intent would be to work to try to include some workforce housing component, to work on the appearance and feel of the project, including obtaining renderings and looking at that as a gateway and being willing to consider financial terms rather than just requiring the entire payment upfront.
Okay, so we are voting on that motion, all, you want to have a roll call vote, please? Or should we just have?
I'd like to get a, I'll just go back to my comments at Finance. There were two criteria which I think council expressed at the original time of this agreement. One was that, that we would boost our purchase price. And then number two was that we would look favorably, most favorably, on the project that would result in the most increment for TIF V. And there's only one developer that gets us there. And to me, I think we're just wasting our time having to essentially rebid or have these two developers rebid when only one is responsive to the RFP.
Okay, so let's have a roll call vote, please, if you're voting yes, that means you're, yes, Howard.
If I could just make a suggestion, also people that are gathered here. In fairness to the eight people gathered around the horseshoe here, if we could, when we do a roll call vote, if we could not start at the same place each and every time and find a process that's acceptable to everybody so that we kind of locate that starting point around the table, I think it would be.
Here, I'll volunteer to go first, I'm voting no.
Okay, so, and.
Are we going this way? Aye.
If we go, it's a clockwork.
Aye.
Okay, Emily?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Howard?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay, so.
Five, three.
No, five, three.
Sure.
Okay, so the motion passes five thirty. So we are on to the resolutions. Resolution 2018 dash 55.
Thanks, thanks, yeah, that one.
Authorizing the direct charge of public fire protection.
There we go.
I'll move approval, second.
Any question or comments or discussion?
Babe?
Yes.
So I, I don't know that anything's going to come that is new. I think we've expressed our viewpoints to this many times over the past month. I would just have one comment to make, and that is that holding elective office requires a duty for us to critically assess both the assumptions and conclusions that are brought in front of us. And to remember that we are responsible to our constituents, not to staff. I asked a couple of questions, I did some research on this issue. The, the public fire protection is a policy issue. There are 990 fire hydrants in the City of Middleton. Right? For 30 years, since they changed the law in 1988, for 30 years, the City of Middleton had made this a municipal charge, not a direct charge, which is what is being proposed. It's 30 years that we have told the citizens of Middleton that fire protection is wholly a function of the general fund and is subject to levy. Right? I asked the Water Utility Director, Manager, or whatever his title is, whether or not the Water Utility needed fire hydrants to do its duty, which is to, to transmit water to houses. And his answer was absolutely not. They do not, the Water Utility does not need fire hydrants for any reason. Right? So clearly, it's not a function of the Water Utility. There is no compelling reason to transfer this fire protection, public fire protection cost to the Water Utility. It is nothing but a backdoor excuse to raise our taxes in excess of the statutory limits. It is a bad policy issue and I urge you to vote no.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so let's have a roll. Yeah, Susan, sorry.
I'd like to comment. We also, as elected officials, have, as I see it, our number one responsibility is for public safety. And we have limitations put on us by the State of Wisconsin that limits what we can do with our levy. And almost every other municipality, certainly in this area, has already done this. And many of them quite a few years ago. But we are facing, I would say, a crisis in terms of how we increase our staff. And we cannot keep paying for it, or I mean, we cannot keep using the levy portion that we get from new growths. Or I mean, we cannot keep using the levy portion that we get from new growths simply to deal with inflation without increasing some of our staff. Tonight, we saw how fantastic our public responders are in terms of saving us from a real tragic event. And but we they're getting very thin on staff and even in our non-public safety departments. We had two requests tonight for approvals of replacements. We live in an area where the unemployment, I think, is like about two percent now. That means all of our excellent staff are ideal targets to be asked and enticed away to other municipalities. And if we want to keep our quality of life and provide a safe environment for our citizens, we have to come up with some revenue or start cutting programs. And I am not in favor of cutting the programs because it'll be the nonessential ones but still are so critical for a good quality life. But I could see the youth commission going. I could see parts of public lands. I can see sustainability, reinstating library fines, increasing park fees, fees for the school or for the swimming pool. And it's gonna take a lot of that to come up to five hundred thousand a year of cuts. We do that, we're gonna have citizens irate with us. So, it's not an easy decision, but I can't support not transferring the fire protection fees because we need to be able to maintain public safety and some of these other things that might not seem as critical but are part of making this a wonderful place to live.
Well, Susan, you don't know that no one is cutting any programs. I mean, you've mentioned many other programs, but there's no one is cutting any of those.
We will have to be cutting programs next year if we don't have additional revenue.
Any other question or comments?
That's patently untrue. You don't know about what's gonna happen next year. Reality is, is that we continue to have net new construction. And what you're concerned about is that incremental revenue that's gonna be that the backdoor tax that you're asking us to approve. That's what that's what's going on here. And that's what it is. It's a backdoor tax. And furthermore, just so everybody's.
Okay, tell me, how do we come up with a two percent rate?
One person at a time, one person at a time, please. Let him finish.
It's okay.
I would like to know how we're gonna come up for a two percent raise for all of our staff next year if we only bring in three hundred thousand in net new construction.
We were already there this year. What you're asking for is to increase staff above levels that they are currently.
Yes.
And I have warned, I have.
Mark, we need staff.
I was accused of lecturing staff and I I wrestle at that description. What I've tried to do is educate you, not to reprove you guys. The reality is, for the last four years, I have warned about the dangers of adding staff because it would get us to this very predicament.
Yes, and the problem is.
And the reality is, is that we cannot do this unless we go to referendum and get get additional secure funding. And all we are doing at this point in time is passing the buck down the road and not allowing ourselves to manage this crisis appropriately. We are grasping at straws and it's just not professional to do it that way.
I just have a simple question. I wonder if George is gonna say that Mark's foaming at the mouth like he said about me? Just to see if it's a female male thing. I'm just curious.
But I mean, we have a problem. We have increased in proper in population, several thousand. And we have not increased police force. We haven't.
We added one police officer last year. That's not true.
One or two officers, not the number we need to do effective policing. And we have heard this year was the first year since I've been on council that we've had the police chief up here talking about it. The first year that our EMS director has been talking about our budget and our city administrator.
They've talked about these issues for the last five years.
I haven't finished. Let me finish. You didn't want me to interrupt you. And you're not managing it well if you don't let me finish.
Please.
We have an issue of we need more staff. I come in here and they are always working. I see very tired faces. I know they're working overtime. We cannot keep asking them to do that. We need to increase some of our staffing. And we're not gonna be able to do it unless we get another source of revenue. And the state has not given us many chances to get additional revenue.
Oh, are you done?
Are you done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
So, just as a point of clarification. According to the Public Service Commission, there are, I think, approximately seven hundred and fifty municipal water utilities across Wisconsin. And just under half of them, not the majority, just under half, are using the PFP on the water utilities. So, it's not as widespread as my people might think. There is still this point where it is contentious for all communities. Because what it does is it abdicates the responsibility to manage budgets correctly. It is nothing but a pure power play to get additional revenue. That's all it is. The mechanism to get more revenue is the referendum. That's the appropriate way to do it. Not to continue to to grasp at these straws that don't help us in the long run.
I have no problem with going to referendum. We should have done it about three years ago. And this council didn't take that up. I have concerns that we're gonna have to wait until twenty twenty and concerns whether it will be successful. We don't have the options that the school district has of parent-teacher organizations and children in schools to help encourage people to vote for the referendum. Getting the stormwater utility for just fifteen dollars took the effort of the Friends of Pheasant Branch to do that, to get it for us.
Okay.
And we can't wait two years to get our staffing for a police officer.
Are you done, Susan?
Yes.
Mike?
We're talking staffing. Last week, last Friday, I sent out a comparison between Middleton, Fitchburg, and Sun Prairie that Bill had put together. And it showed a very skewed number of staff relative to our population, relative to our property valuation. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. I think, you know, Bill was showing it for the administrative staff. But we also know, and we have data on that for other departments as well. We don't have it aggregated for you at this point. But we know that Middleton's staffing has been more frugal over time. We have drained everything that we can out of our staffing. It will be difficult to keep up with maintenance without additional staffing. And just, you know, as a refresher in what that was in that Finance and Personnel Committee compromise that was published in the budget. It included a new police officer. It included a promotion of an existing officer to a sergeant. It included seasonal staff for both public lands and for public works. One of the the most critical areas of our citizen survey was maintenance for public works. The it included a, for one year, a promotion to city forester for one city employee so that Mark Wagner could work more fully on the flood recovery. And that's an important component of all of this. What we're being asked to do with existing resources and then with the flood recovery on top of that and I believe the aftermath of the active shooter incident and how that is affecting our public safety as well. It is draining our resources. And I just would hope that the council would understand that. This council has, over time, made investment in staff. And it has helped to keep us to the point where we can work hard to keep keep up. But we're getting close to that point where we just can't keep up any longer. And I think your investment in this fee would be one that would help us to maintain over the next couple of years so that we aren't in a position to going to referendum and depending upon that, which would be in three budget years. Thank you.
Okay, any other question or comments? So, let's have a roll call vote starting. You wanna start?
Wait a second.
Oh, sorry.
I'm I'm just wondering, point of order, does the mayor call for a roll call vote?
No.
One of you like to call for a roll call?
I would like to call for a roll call.
Oh, okay, all right.
But I don't think the mayor gets to.
Okay, okay, all right, so.
I'll start. Aye. Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, no.
Okay, five thirty, motion passes. And I want to let you know at this time I plan to veto it. So, whether or not you want to go forward with this now, so.
You plan on vetoing?
Yes.
What do you plan?
I plan to veto this resolution.
For council members, staff have thought about this, whether the veto, the mayor would veto. We would need to set up a meeting next week so that you could consider overriding the veto in order to keep our tax bills or get our tax bills out in a reasonable time in December. It's a it's not a matter of state legislation telling us a certain time. It's a matter of what is practical in getting those tax bills out. So, we need to have some definition of that by the council. So, I would just ask if we could schedule a meeting briefly next Tuesday for that that possibility. You know, the mayor has five days, but he's he's told you he would go ahead and veto.
Yes, Howard, you have a question?
I was just gonna say, what's the structure behind veto? What are the requirements of council?
It would be a six vote votes necessary to override a veto. So, if there was a lack of that, if it was still five, then we would be back to determining what is the budget for twenty nineteen.
Yes, Susan.
Are you aware of the consequences of people not getting their tax bills and not being able to pay their taxes in twenty eighteen?
Yes, yes, I am. I talk to the staff, yes.
How angry all of the citizens would be? Because many of us have for years paid our taxes in December so we could deduct them on our twenty eighteen income taxes. Transferring that to twenty nineteen means we lose a significant amount of money. And that's what you would be doing.
Actually, I think what Mike just explained was that he wanted a meeting so that we'd solve that problem. Avoid that issue.
If we can.
So.
Yeah.
There's there is, there's no delay in the process at this point. But that says that we need a meeting next week to resolve this issue.
Somebody like to make a motion to have a meeting next week? I think that's what.
We need the, do we need a motion? No.
On a motion, Mike?
I I'm just asking if we could.
Well, first of all, we haven't passed the budget. Can we just do all of that? Because I I think we need to know all the decisions that are being made tonight? Because if if the mayor is gonna veto this part, he has to veto the budget as well. And that has to come back before us.
Or.
Because I'm.
I've I've advised the mayor that 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 in light of the certainty that there will be a veto issued within the next five days, if the budget that you have before you has this topic as if it was going to be included. So, the budget becomes annulity if you vote tonight. I suggested to the mayor that it would be more appropriate to defer the budget until the the vote on the veto override. And if that override motion fails, that the staff, the Finance Committee, or the council finds the money that is lost by the decision made on this this fee transfer. So, the 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 motion would otherwise, it it makes no sense to have two vetoes when you go because then that then you'd have to have a separate. And the mayor has assured me, I think I can say this, right? That the only reason for the veto will be this fee. So, you're gonna get a second veto message with the same issue. And I think it makes more sense to just simply delay the vote on the budget until the resolution of the the veto override and any budget adjustments that'll be necessary to take into account the result of of the this revenue being missing from the budget.
So, do we need a motion to establish a meeting for next week? Or is that something that's just administratively?
Hey, administratively, you can just call.
Well, here's the problem, though. What happens if one of us can't make one of the meetings? And we know these votes are really close. So, are you picking and choosing which side could win on any one of those nights? Or a lack of of the right type of six votes? I find it really disturbing that we're doing this on the fly. I'm really disappointed in the mayor that he's not supporting our city and that, you know, he's talked about all kinds of things throughout the city about fixing roads and asking staff to do this and asking staff to do that. And now he's not gonna support the very function of of how we pay for that, which is really disturbing. And the fact that a minority of this council can hold the rest of us hostage. It's really disturbing. We've just acceded our authority to the mayor. That's what the council has done if we allow this to happen. So, it's it's just a really disturbing night for me. And especially for my last budget, it's really disturbing, so.
What I was suggesting was a meeting prior to the Plan Commission next Tuesday at six o'clock. Would that work for folks?
I'm available.
You buying pizza?
Yeah. We're doing pizza.
We can buy pizza if, well, I won't say that.
I I could buy the pizza.
Yeah, I think there's some of us that can buy the pizza. I'm concerned also, can we get it done in an hour?
Should only take about two minutes.
Well, but again, as I said, if 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 the veto is not overridden, the budget that you would be adopting would be invalid because it assumes the presence of this revenue in the budget as adopted. So, these are in, these are interlocked. It takes, it's gonna take more than two minutes to fix the budget.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, because if.
I mean, if it's overridden, that's fine, then it's done. But we don't know.
Well, the Plan Commission meets at seven thirty. We still have one and a half hours, so.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, yeah, that's one hour, so. That could meet later, I mean, that's not a problem, so. Okay, so.
Well, it would be helpful if folks could just let me know if if there's a conflict next Tuesday night.
Good.
I'm available.
I'm available.
Six o'clock early enough. We need to talk about five thirty instead of six.
You're not getting into my troubles. I have pickup. I got kids.
I I had to.
I gotta get pizza too now.
Had to ask.
We'll take.
Okay, so, six o'clock, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh is the proposed.
Okay, is there anyone who can make it?
Twenty-seventh?
It is the twenty-seventh. Be out of town.
Where you gotta fly home from?
Can he call in if he's out of?
Six o'clock.
Six?
Can you call in?
Yeah, can we can we do it on, instead of Tuesday? Can we do it on Monday night?
Uh, there's one slight problem. What time, Matt, are we meeting?
Monday night works better for me.
Six, could we do it at seven on Monday?
Seven and Monday, yep.
We will have a public works meeting.
I can step out of that.
All right, why don't you, Sean, can't you work your magic and rearrange it so that we don't have a meeting?
If others will constitute a moron, you could step out.
I think, yeah.
Guess what?
What time is public works at?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Started at seven thirty?
Or Wednesday. Or Wednesday.
I think Wednesday's pushing it. We need to get this solved as soon as possible.
Oh, actually, we don't have finance staff on Wednesday. They're at the government, government finance officers.
Monday at 7:30, Monday at 7:30 works for everybody?
7:30.
Monday at 7:30.
Monday at 7:30.
7:30.
One more issue, just so you understand. I've put this in writing. If you have a forum, no matter how many people show up for any meeting like this to override the veto, it requires six votes.
Right, exactly.
It's not three fourths. It's, it's three fourths of the entire council, so it would be six out of seven, it would be six out of six, just so you understand. So, just to clarify then, everyone could be here Monday at 7:30. I didn't hear any no's, so I'm assuming we can go ahead and set out an agenda for next Monday.
Okay. Could we vote on the capital?
Then, then you would want to move to defer the budget.
I did somewhere.
So that.
Okay, item number two?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to defer item number two. We need a.
You're deferring two through five, right? That we defer two through five.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any question or discussion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passed. We need a motion to.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.